Good, I got a big list. Okay, we'd like to get started. We'd like to welcome everybody out that's here in our chambers for our meeting and those who are watching on TV. Just one programming note, the Spanish Fork High School baseball game is in rain delay right now. It is supposed to, it'll probably start in a half hour maybe. If it does, you can go to sfcn.org, G? That's what I thought. To watch it live. Or, we'll put it up on the screen here so you can watch it. Anyway, we've asked Aaron Vicker to come and give us our inspirational message and prayer, so if he'd like to come up, I'd like to invite you up.
Counsel, thank you for the opportunity. Aaron Vickery is my name. I'm with Crossings Church over here on 8th East. And put together a few words tonight just before prayer, so thank you for this time. Speaking of generalities here, not necessarily towards anybody, some thoughts here to open this up. Living in tough times in this world, we should look and wonder why. People by their very sin nature are led away and turn to the evils so present in society. Without strong leadership to guide folks, they turn from doing good and en masse will elect folks to lead them that allow them to continue on in their desires. We see this so prevalently on a national level, where people are turning from God under pressure from minorities who are trying to speak as the majority and they're winning. We see this, and a good example of this in the Old Testament, when I start thinking about political topics, it reminds me, there's a section I like in the Old Testament, First Samuel in the eighth chapter. Samuel was a king, he led the Israelites. And as he was dying, he was, he was turning over his, his authority to his sons. His sons didn't quite follow in his ways. If you'll bear with me here, got a few verses of this to read, starting in the eighth chapter, verse three. Says, "But his sons did not walk in his ways; they turned aside after dishonest gain, took bribes and perverted justice. Then all the elders of Israel gathered around, came to Samuel at Ramah, and they said to him, 'Look, you are old, and your sons do not walk in your ways. Now make us a king, to judge us like all the other nations.' But that thing displeased Samuel, when they said, 'Give us a king to judge us.' So Samuel prayed to the Lord, and the Lord said to Samuel, 'heed the voice of the people in all that they say to you; for they have not rejected you, but they have rejected me, that I should not reign over them, according to all the works which they have done since that day, since I brought them out of Egypt, even to this day with which they have forsaken me, and served other gods,' lowercase g gods here, 'so they are doing to you also. Now therefore heed their voice; however you shall solemnly forewarn them, and show them the behavior of the king who will reign over them.'" So Samuel told the words of the Lord to the people who asked him for a king. And it goes on in the rest of this chapter to explain in detail what the Lord is telling Samuel, to tell these people what will happen. Not good stuff, it goes on and on. Pulling from a commentary from Matthew Henry, a few notes on this real quick. The people were willing to trade his government, his capital, his God's government, for the government of a king. If they were not gratified, they would either rise up in rebellion against Samuel or universally revolt from their religion and admit that the gods of the nation, that they might have kings like them. Those that submit to the government of the world in the flesh are told plainly what hard masters they are and what a tyranny the dominion of sin is. And yet they exchange God's government for it. Counsel, I bring these matters up to you, just as a matter to reflect upon. You've got a tough job. The city has elected you to lead them, to guide them, to be their voice. I urge you to remain fast in the guidance of our Lord Jesus, to lead the people on the town of Spanish Fork in the correct ways and in a godly fashion that will never lead you astray in spite of the pressures that can come upon us from the world. Be strong in your values and never be afraid to ask of his counsel. We pray that our Lord Jesus will continue to give you the wisdom you need to make hard choices when you need to and to guide this town in the right direction. Finishing this up, Dr. R.C. Sproul, he defined in a, in an interview in a study series called The Truth Project, says there are ethics and morals in society. Morals focus on the is of a culture and ethics focus on the ought of a culture. Moral codes change based on how people behave in a society. When not guided to the majority voice, depending on behavior, if fifty-one percent of a people act or believe in a certain way, it becomes normal. Therefore, behavior now becomes good, and because that behavior is then determined by what is rather than what ought to be. Following God and the leadership of our Lord Jesus, we can be sure that we are always on and leading in the right direction that we ought to be in, rather than accepting the norm of what is. Now, I just want to address the people of Spanish Fork, as the Apostle Paul wrote to the, the folks in the letter to the Romans, thirteenth chapter. He said, "Let every soul be subject to the governing authorities; for there is no authority except from God, and the authorities that exist are appointed by God. Therefore whoever resists the authority, resists the ordinance of God, and those who resist will bring judgment on themselves. For rulers are not a terror to good works, but to evil. Do you want to be unafraid of authority? Do what is good, and you will have praise from the same." Let's pray. Father, God, we just thank you for this time that we've got to come together in this free nation to look over the matters of our civil, civil affairs here. And Father, we just want to ask that you will constantly be with this council, they'll be guy, or be guided to direct these matters. Father, we ask that you'll also watch over this nation, this state, guide these people in a, in a manner where they be God fearing instead of turning to the ways of the world. Father, we just want to thank you right now for this time for the rain, thank you for our, our military fighting for our freedom so we can stand here and come together like this. Father, we just want to thank you for the grace that you so freely poured down upon us and for your toning sacrifice on the cross, Lord Jesus, that you paid for all of our sins that we could never attain on our own. We thank you so much and we bless this meeting in your precious holy name, Jesus. Amen. Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thanks.
I've asked Councilman Scopes to lead us in the pledge allegiance.
The audience, please rise. Repeat the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. IPSA, five-year with no lost time accident award. Come on up, state your name.
My name, excuse me, my name's Bruce Turner. I am the chairman of IPSA and also the operations manager of Murray City Power. I thank you for letting us be here tonight. Kelly asked me to kind of explain to you what IPSA is. IPSA stands for Intermountain Power Superintendent's Association. We oversee the apprenticeships for line, linemen and substation technicians, their schooling, their testing, pretty much everything that, that helps make them the great employees for the cities and municipalities that they work for. We have municipalities all the way from southern Idaho all the way down into Overton, over into Ely, Nevada, pretty much all the municipalities within the state of Utah are members. So, it's a pretty big group. In our industry, it's very rare to see a company that can go five years without a lost time accident. You should be very, very proud of your power division. I know what a great man they have leading them, because he was the chairman of this and I got to follow him and it's been very difficult to step into his footsteps, but he, he's a great guy and, and lead your department well. I think IPSA would never ever be able to do, be able to do the things we do without the help and the leadership from the, the different municipal city councils. And I thank you guys for all the help that you let Kelly give to us. It takes a lot of time and effort to make this thing work, so just thank you for that. You know, it, it's just, it's hard to get up here and explain how, how hard it is to work for five consecutive years without having any kind of lost time accident. It's, down in Murray, we had a gentleman fall off a pole last year. Had a pole snap off, though they had tested, it had rotted up instead of down. Luckily, he lived through it, but accidents happen every day in this industry. So, you should be very proud and I'm very honored to give this award to Kelly, when you come up, and your power division. And thank you for all your support and everything you do to help us.
Thank you. We do appreciate our electrical department. These guys save us a lot of money just by not having accidents. It keeps our insurance rates low and we keep our employees safe. And I know they do a lot of training, I work in that department with them and Kelly's, does a great job leading that division and we sure appreciate you. No, you're done. And thanks, Bruce, for coming down and doing that for us. You bet. Okay. Public comment. Anybody from the public would like to come up and address the, the mayor of the council may do so at this time? All right, seeing none. We'll move on to council comments. Let's start with Councilman Dart.
No, I don't have anything today.
Like it. Councilman Scopes.
Just a couple of small things. Been out of town on military duty and just to, just to give some announcements to the Veterans Committee, they'll be involved in several different things, not just here in Spanish Fork, but throughout, throughout the Spanish Fork Salem area. Biggest thing for us in Spanish Fork is on Memorial Day, the twenty-fifth, is at the Spanish Fork Cemetery at ten thirty, the Memorial Day celebration that they'll be doing here in the city, just a wonderful memorial there. They'll be involved in Benjamin and Salem, doing graduations and color guards and memorials there, so they're, they're working well as a group for some of these joint ventures. And that's all I have to, that's all I have this time.
Thanks. Councilman Mendenhall.
Couple things, Mayor. The Coach Pitch Cubs, when I left them, were in good form. We had batted through the lineup pretty good. So if they don't keep it up, when they, when I hear back from them, they're in trouble.
Who's pitching if the coach is here?
Assistant coach.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Lot of trust.
No, just proud of our recreation department and starting out the, the baseball league up there at the fields and a soccer game gets done and then we get right into T-ball and Coach Pitch up there, always a favorite time of the year. If the mayor could do something about the weather, it started to rain as I left, so I'll work on that. But other than that, just looked great up at Centennial Park, so thanks to the Parks and Rec Department for, you know, keeping it all looking good up there and letting our kids have a great place to play, so fun times to come. Next thing, before I go to the Chamber of Commerce Minute with President Beck and Clark Karas, Brandon Gordon and I, Councilman Gordon and I, got the opportunity yesterday, yesterday?
Yes.
Yesterday, to visit Park Elementary and see some great kids that, that are part of the Park Panthers here in town. And they've come to join us today with, with their principal, Ryan K., and, and Mr. Gull here. And we'd like to, to invite them up for a minute to stand right here in front of the, in the mic, on the front of the microphone if you can, and maybe tell us your name and, and Brandon and I will maybe ask you a couple of questions about your Leader in Me program that we just learned about yesterday, which was so awesome to have us, have us there for breakfast and they call it a victory breakfast, right? And they just quizzed us on the seven habits that they incorporate into all their learning at Park Elementary. And we were so proud to, to be part of that with you the other morning. But I can tell you, they kind of whooped up on us a little bit, Mayor, on knowing all the habits and how to incorporate them and everything, so.
Hey, they're pretty sharp.
So, if we could, if we could maybe have the, your administrators come up here and, and join us and then the kids come up and, and join us, we'd sure like the, the TV to get a good look at these fine young men and women. I'm not calling them kids, even though they're kindergarten to, what have we got, sixth, are you sixth grade? Kindergarten to sixth grade. These are, these are young men and women that, that are part of the Leader in Me program at Park Elementary. And I dare Councilman Gordon to ask you a question about the, about the seven habits and see if these kids can answer, but maybe we'll have you. Ryan, you want to start with their names, introducing these kids to us?
My name is Brandon Gordon.
My name is Lady Cranford.
My name is Peyton Cranford.
I'm Jessica Cook.
I'm Andrew Connor.
I'm Natalie Ray.
I'm Samara.
I'm Jordan Mary.
Did you guys notice how they looked you in the eye when they introduced themselves? That's one thing that I learned they teach you there. And I was really impressed, because every kid was very, very respectful and was easy to have a conversation with these kids. Do you want to, do you, Mr. K., do you want to tell us about the, the program and, and how you landed one hundred and first out of the world?
Step right up to the mic, that way we can hear you on TV.
I'm actually going to let them tell you.
That's right. That's how that works.
Hey, Jessica, do you want to tell them about our work that we received last fall?
Just step right up here and to the mic.
There you go.
There you go.
Pull it down. There you go.
Brandon, was that shy too, the first city council member that he came to?
Yep.
Last spring, we received the lighthouse status, which is the highest status, status in the Leader in Me program.
We were the hundred and first school to get the lighthouse award.
In the whole nation, right?
In the whole world.
In the whole world.
World. And who came to that ceremony? Was any of you here when that, when he came?
Sean Covey came.
That's right. That was pretty awesome.
Is he taller than you?
Not much.
The mayor was?
Some of our friends back there were there too.
So maybe we could have you guys, could you tell us some, some of the, the seven habits that are in your Leader in Me program? I know they incorporate all these into your, into your daily learning, so tell us at least one of the, at least one of the habits.
Habit one is be proactive. Habit two is begin with and mind. Habit three is put first things first. Habit four is think and win. Habit five is seek first to understand then to be understood. Habit six is synergize. Habit seven is sharpen the saw.
Pretty impressive, didn't it? Yeah, man. Pretty impressive.
I can tell you, we were at their school and these, each one of these kids, there were, there were more than this in our, in our breakfast that morning, and they came up on their own to Brandon, myself, and Lana Hiskey and shook our hands and introduced themselves, looked us right in the eye with a firm handshake and said their name and asked us our name. So, Brandon and I were very impressed and very honored to be at your school and we're so happy you're in our city and the future leaders of our city, the future people that make it happen. So, thank you and, and thank you, Mr. K. and Mr. Gull, for all you do for that great school up there.
Thank you.
It's pretty impressive.
Anything we can do for the community? We love to participate in service. That's one of the things we're also teaching students at Park Elementary.
We got something this Thursday for you.
You say service and, and Councilman Davis will give you a schedule of when, when to meet him everywhere around the city.
I'll tell you, it's pretty impressive, these guys, when you come and go to their, their school program, the adults don't start, don't lead it, the, the kids take care and they, they do the whole program and from start to finish, and so it's pretty impressive. We appreciate you guys, thanks for coming.
Thanks, guys, for coming.
Thanks, guys.
Now try to follow that, President Beck and Director Karas, good luck.
That was going to be my opening line, not so hard act to follow, there darling. Our hands are in good hands with these guys, though. We have a, oh, three things I wanted to bring up. Lots happening with the chamber. The first one is the Rotary Spanish Fork Chamber, Spanish Fork Salem Chamber Golf Tournament, as you all know, because you'll be golfing, right? Weather permitting.
We'll be sharpening our saw.
Sharpening your saw.
That's the seventh habit that the kids taught me yesterday.
Oh, okay, okay.
And that includes golf.
Okay. It's doing something you want to do when all of the hard work's done. Find balance in your life.
Wow.
You learned that, yeah, just yesterday.
Wow. Way to go, I hope you can implement that into your life, Brandon.
I'm going to try. My wife's watching, so probably won't happen.
The tournament is a fundraiser for seniors in our area from Mapleton, Salem, and Spanish Fork to give back, and it's just been amazing, the thousands of dollars that have been donated in lieu of these senior applicants that are hoping to get a scholarship. They will be presented in June and it's been amazing to me, all the volunteer hours that have gone into this, it's phenomenal that all these people don't get paid and they just give, 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 from, you know, the businesses to individual hours, so I appreciate that. And we look forward to having it later in the year, because it doesn't rain this late in the year, and that's why we bumped, they bumped it later in May, so praying for good weather.
Can't win for losing, can you?
Yeah. And the next thing is the Play and Plug Program. The committee that has overseen that has hit every single elementary in May, well, in the last two weeks, and have done a phenomenal job at getting the kids excited about this Play and Plug Program that will launch next week. Everyone should have their lanyards. For viewers, viewers at home, if you need a lanyard for like your young kids that are not in school, please stop by the chamber office and we would love to give you a lanyard so you can participate in the one hundred and one activities. Again, all the volunteering that has gone into this by the committee, I appreciate they're all members of the Chamber of Commerce. And the amount of money that every business, every business has at least had to pay five hundred dollars to give back to the community. And a lot of them know that it's just going to be people coming in, getting tags, but they want the community united and to encourage the kids to unplug their devices this summer, so we're excited about that. And then one way, the chamber's giving back. We have two box seats to the Champions Challenge Rodeo next Saturday night on the thirtieth, and we have reached out to some chamber members that have really given back recently, that we'd like to recognize and thank them for their time, as well as reaching out to businesses that we would love to see more involved in our community and, and possibly join the Chamber of Commerce. So, I'll be at the Champions Challenge Rodeo. And that's all to report on, from the chamber.
Awesome.
Thanks, Stacy.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor. You can see where future leaders of elementary schools are in good hands and our chambers in good hands.
Yes, they are, you know, and they start in kindergarten. Oh. Because my wife teaches kindergarten at Park Elementary. There we go. All right, Councilman Davis.
One note, I went to the Scholarship Assembly today at Spanish Fork High School, and we truly have one of the greatest generations graduating from both high schools. I, I went to Spanish Fork one today, but they gave out over a million dollars in scholarships today, just at Spanish Fork High School, to these kids. We have the opportunity to give out one of those scholarships and the applicants that put in for the scholarship that I gave out, I couldn't, it's probably the best grade point average and ACT scores I've ever seen in the twenty years that we've been doing it. They're just unreal kids and, and it was really hard to pick, you know, an applicant for my scholarship, so I can't even imagine about the other million dollars that was participating, and that was just Spanish Fork High School, so I'm sure Maple Mountain and ALA and, and all those that had scholarships out. Anyway, we just have a wonderful generation here at Spanish Fork that, that is going, that as Mike said, our future leaders in our community and our, and our country, so could do to them. This Thursday at three o'clock, anyone that would love to come up to the cemetery and volunteer their services, we are putting out the crosses and the flags for the veterans that have passed away, that have served our country and lived in Spanish Fork. That's at three o'clock at the cemetery this Thursday. Each one of those flags and crosses represent a veteran that's, that have served our country. There is over fifteen hundred of them. They, there's some that have served in the Civil War, Black Hawk War, and the wars that we, we are serving in now. Anyway, it's, it's really a spiritual setting to, to help do this. I've been doing it for many, many years and it just amazes me, the people that will come out and donate their time to put these flags out and then on Memorial Day to, to, you know, come and see that. Last year, I remember, we got them just all set out and the flags all on and the poppies all in and the, the wind started blowing, and so all of a sudden, all the flags just stood at attention. Fifteen hundred of them, it was, it was an unreal sight. And so, anyone that would just love to come and, and help us at that, it's just a great, it's just a great volunteer service. This Thursday, three o'clock at the cemetery, and then we take them down after Memorial Day, on Tuesday at three o'clock. Anyway, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Gordon.
Just on the heels of Law Enforcement Week, I just want to tell Chief Adams how much we appreciate our law enforcement, our, they're all men right now, so I can say the men that help keep us safe, and so really appreciate, appreciate them. Appreciate Sterling Johnson, our Sexton and his crew. Hope everybody enjoys a wonderful Memorial Day weekend up at the cemetery and enjoys that, that area. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Great. Thank you. I just want to take a minute and thank all the citizens and individuals that came and planted flowers on Main Street. That was a neat experience to go to walk between them and watch them and help them and see that in our city, even in the rain, they were there planting flowers. I mean, that's a great service that, that everyone does in our city and it makes our Main Street look beautiful and it gives them an opportunity to serve, and I just want to, we all want to thank you for doing that and appreciate that. Also, I wanted to thank all those that came out to the barbecue with the mayor last Monday. We had a great turnout, there was a lot of food, and we were kicking off our Main Street look and what we can do to help things down there on Main Street. And appreciate all those who are working on that, see what we can do to help beautify our city, our Main Street, and just make Spanish Fork a neat place to be at all times. And the food was pretty good. My wrist is a little sore from flipping burgers, but I'll, I'll get over it. The last thing I want to talk about is, I've had a lot of people ask me about, we've read in the paper about water shortage and, you know, other cities are putting restrictions on water, and where do we stand in Spanish Fork? Well, Spanish Fork is in good shape, water-wise. We still need to conserve, we still need to be conscious of how we use our water, we're, we're still in a drought, but there will not be any restrictions in Spanish Fork, just use common sense, and nobody should have to be watering the last two weeks, because we've had plenty of rain and so, and it looks like we're going to continue to have some, except Thursday, the sun will come out for the golf tournament and we'll be all right there, but, so just be aware of the water situation and then conserve it and then we'll continue to be in good shape. Chris Thompson's done a great job with managing the water here in Spanish Fork and we got great staff, we appreciate that. Okay, let's move on to Spanish Fork 101, Champions Challenge Rodeo, Buckaroo, Dell Russell. Well, I'm happy to say that Stacy's already covered mine, so thank you. Hey, she gave us a good, we just needed, we just, oh, you got my back, get up here. Yeah, we want to, we want to just take a couple minutes, me and my buddy Cowboy Steve here, Mr. Rodeo.
Mr. Rodeo, and cover a couple items on the Champions Challenge, and then, so that the public's aware of what's actually coming, if you don't know already. This is our second go-round with this rodeo. We are one of very few cities in the country selected to host one of these, and if you wanna know what it really is, it's the All-Star Rodeo. So if you wanna go to an All-Star Game for Rodeo, it's right here in our town. Basically, a mini NFR that they bring here. So we have, we have the best cowboys and cowgirls in the world, we have the best stock in the world from multiple stock contractors. In fact, I had a citizen the other day say, "Could you not bring quite so good a stock?" Because we actually would like to see some of the cowboys ride. I know last year, the bull riders had a tough time staying on some of those, so we're fortunate to be one of the few that are hosting this event. It is CBS Sports will be televising this, and it'll be played at a later date, so our city gets a lot of wonderful exposure from this event. It is, as Stacy said, on May 30th at 8:00. We have a lot of events leading up to this, the reading program, the Champions Challenge reading program that everybody's heard about in the elementary schools. We could've asked some of these kids how many pages, or how many, how long they read. We had, we had about 6,600 students participate from 10 elementary schools, and they read 2.1 million minutes. How, how many, how many hours is that?
What are you asking me?
I don't know who tracks the minutes.
These are schoolteachers.
Fraud. 5th grade teacher, tell us how much 2.1 million minutes is. It's a lot.
A lot.
Just say it's a bunch. Anyway, and the winners of that, you know, there were certain that were drawn out, Justin Boots sponsored, they'll receive a pair of new boots from Justin. That day, on the 30th, at 4:00, behind Reams, we're having an autograph session, where all of those cowboys and cowgirls will be there to sign autographs. We will be presenting to those students their, their new boots, so they can wear them to the rodeo that night. So we'll have a presentation there, and it's, it's gonna be a lot of fun, and a lot of excitement. These students really get into this. In fact, Steve and I were talking when Park Elementary was up here, when we went to do one of the assemblies there, Randy Munn's our rodeo clown, who is also an educator, went with us to 10 elementaries to promote and launch this program, this reading program, and their students all stood up and conducted the entire thing. The adults had nothing to do with it, and they were very impressive. So, anyway, all the elementary schools were fun, and it was, it was fun to have them there. I know this is risky, but I'm gonna let Steve talk for a few minutes. I've tried to tell him that we have a limit, okay, so.
What's the limit?
Two minutes.
Eight seconds.
You're over.
The eight seconds.
The first thing I would.
You didn't pick up on that, did you? Eight seconds.
Oh, hey, all right, I get you. I didn't hear it at first, but thank you. I would like to thank all the sponsors that helped make this come real for us. They put up some good money to come in, because this was a little risky at first, when we was trying the waters on it, but I really do thank all the sponsors for the support they gave us. And for you, the council, and for our administration, of getting behind this and supporting this to come, because when we first talking about this, this was pretty risky of doing, but it turned out that it was great, and I think it was a great thing for our city. And like Dale said, we do have the top cowboys in the world. Any cowboy cannot just come to this rodeo. They have to qualify for this rodeo, and what it is, they take this top seven of the National Finals Rodeo 2014, and they're eligible. And then they go down the list, and they get them, they got the top seven, and then 30 days from the rodeo, whoever's winning the world, the top two, they get to qualify for it, and then the top two that's leading the million dollar tour gets to qualify for it. So you can see, it's just, like Dale says, it's a mini NFR, it's the best of the best on some of the stock that we've got. And some of them, cowboys that we've got coming, Bobby Malt, four-time world champion, we have four of the Wright brothers, all of them coming, Spencer won last year, the Saddle Bronck, and him, and Rusty, and Jake, and Jesse are all coming to it. Cody's out on an injury, he got hurt at the NFR, or else he'd be here, but Wesley Silcox, right from Payson, Utah, has moved up into the world standings, and he just won three rodeos in California, and he's at number two in the world. And he won the world in 2008, and he'll be here. And then Tuth Cooper, I know that a lot of people know about rodeos here, but the king of all the cowboys, Trevor Brazil, he will be here. Cody All, Luke Branquino, Clay Tryon, Jake Barnes, and Clay O'Brien Cooper, that's seven world titles between them, you know, and Patrick Smith, and then Mary Walker, and Sherry Servick in the barrel racing. So it is, it is a great all-star class, and between them, the contestants are coming Spanish Fork, Dale had me check this out today, we have 76 world titles.
How many did Michael Jordan have?
Yeah. 76 world titles coming to Spanish Fork, so this is, you know, it just don't get any better. And we have this kinda caliber at Fiesta Days, but they're scattered over four days. Here, this is a one-night showdown, and the best of the best is going right there, and the winner's pronounced right after the event, so it's the best of best, it's really good. I am gonna offer, the first person that can call me on my office phone at 10:07 in the morning, 10:07 AM, gets two free tickets. First person that can call me at 10:07 gets two free tickets, not before, it's gotta be after 10:07.
So you said, will you be in your office by that time?
I should be. I'm gonna set my alarm clock, I'm gonna set my alarm.
That's why you set it so late.
I'm gonna set my alarm. But this is really good, and you know Dale, there's gonna be a lot of disappointed people that will not get tickets, that's for sure.
Now, that arena holds how many?
8,400.
Well, I looked today, and there looked like there was about 3,600 tickets left.
Yeah, we're over halfway, we're over halfway sold, and so that's kinda why we wanted to let people know, they don't, you don't wanna miss this event, and you can go on sfcitytics.com and purchase your tickets. Again, the report is that we've sold more tickets this year at this time than we had last year, so momentum's building, and people are excited about it, so don't wait, we want you to get, get online and make sure you, or participate in this event. We also are one of the only ones, in fact, I think we're the only one in the country that sold out our event.
Yes.
Last year, out of the ones that were here, so we're pretty proud of that in our city, and the PRCA recognizes that, and they're thrilled to be coming here again.
And the cowboys and cowgirls like coming here, don't they? Because we treat them right.
The facility that we have and that, and a lot of them will tell you, you know, Dale remembered this when we was first building that, when we checked them, they like our arena, the atmosphere, where the crowd's on top. For some reason, the horses, and even the contestants' horses and the bucking stock perform better. They really do, and they, they really like the conditions that we have down here.
Right.
Really good.
Thank you, appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Well done.
That's all we have.
All right, thank heavens.
Thank you.
Steve, call my dad. We need another call.
Okay.
I got one, call me tomorrow.
Okay. All right, consent items.
You did tell me to hold over, it's all my.
FYE 215 Utility Accounts Receivable Write-Offs. Is this mine?
I hope not. Each year, the city has quite a few utilities, you can see the different types of utilities we have. We have electric, PI, water, sewer, garbage, storm drain, internet, cable, telephone, we have all those internet, or all those utility services, and this year, our write-offs are less than one-half of 1% of what our revenue is, and so the city's, has a pretty good return, but there is a need each year to write off some utilities that we've exhausted. The majority of these are from 2011, so they're probably from the years that, when the economy was bad, and we've been trying to collect on these, at this point, we've exhausted all of our efforts, and so we're asking the council to approve the write-off of $105,000, which is less than one-half of 1%.
Okay. Great.
We are working really hard to get a, the bridge widened at Cut Bridge at the end of Center Street. It looks like we'll be able to start construction this summer. We have our easements approved, and we also have an approved agreement from Union Pacific, which is great, both of those kinda came together just recently, and so this is the agreement with Union Pacific to allow us to do the construction over the railroad track. In turn, we have to pay them for flagging and inspection. Any questions?
Thanks, Chris. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
Don't move.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Dart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great. All right. Proposed preliminary plat and zone change for the townhomes at Maggie's Band.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Anderson would typically do this, but he is away at a conference, and he's asked me to pinch-hit for him. If we can get Seth to blow that in, this is a little bit difficult parcel to develop that's out near Kmart, Wendy's area. The property owner has come along and proposed that he do a townhome project on this parcel that's outlined in blue. In order to do a townhome project in our city more, he needs an infill overlay zone, and that has to take place in the R3 zone, so this is already zoned R3, he has the underlying zone he needs, but he needs a zone change to the inlay overlay zone in order to do the townhome project that he's proposing. So, the way our ordinance is set up is we would do the zone change once we'd looked at the project and feel good about the project, so we will have a public hearing this evening to look at the zone change, but we'll also approve both the zone change and the preliminary plat if the council is favorable to those prospects. So this does contain 28 townhome units. Can you blow that in any bigger?
Closer.
When they first came, they had a couple of extra buildings in there, that raised some concern amongst the DRC, so before they ever went to Planning Commission, they revised it a little bit, they took out a couple of buildings, they added some parking, they've got a tot lot, made a little bit more green space, and as they've made those changes, the DRC felt pretty good about it. I understand the zoning, or the Planning Zoning Commission had very little comment, they felt pretty good about the way it is, but as you can see from the location, the shape, that's a, you know, fairly difficult piece to do much with, as you go off to the east, there's a pretty good slope there, and there's some wetlands in the area, so we feel this is a good use. So again, we're talking about some townhome projects, that all have garages, they have some visitor parking, they have some green space and a tot lot. So any questions about what we're doing, how the process works? With that, Mayor, we do need a public hearing for the zone change, and we'd be appropriate to proceed to that point.
Great. I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
Don't move.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scobes, a second by Councilman Mendenhall, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are now in public hearing, anybody here that would like to come up and discuss or talk about this zone? You're welcome.
Hi, Jim.
Just.
I could've gone home and showered before I got here.
Just go ahead and state your name.
My name's James B. Singer, Jim B. Singer. How do I turn this on?
Push the button on this, yeah, right there.
Operation, there we go. Hold on, hold on. Oh, you have to push and hold.
You gotta keep holding it.
Push and hold, okay.
Yep.
I live right there. This is also a residence that we ran out. One of the things that concerns me was seeing this, this layout, and maybe somebody has the contours for this area, from approximately this point down to that little trail right there, or to the water course that goes through here, there's approximately 20 feet of fall, which means if you're gonna put any kind of a structure in here, choose this area, you're gonna be putting it on fill, and that fill is, you know, it's not cheap, or I don't think you can get compacts to be able to hold that structure, so you may have to put in something like a helical pier or something like that in order to sustain the loadings that are The other thing is, is in this little shack right here, there's a flowing well, and the flowing well is flowing by the 1-inch pipe. The 1-inch pipe flowing here, and somebody went in once upon a time, last couple of years, this water was flowing off over into the road here, and then running down the road and across, and ended up in this, this trench. I call it a trench, 'cause it's four feet deep at least, and there's about four little markers on it to keep cars from driving into it, or people falling into it in the dark. So this might be a good thing to provide some safety along that road, but that water goes in, was flowing there, so they cut a little trench across here to stop the water and let it flow into, or sink into the ground, or into a, and there's a culvert that goes right through here. But it doesn't get to the culvert, because there are two septic tanks and two drain fields that were associated with the veterinary practice that was here, and the residence that was here at one time. That water that comes out of that flowing well must go into those septic tanks and drain fields, and then comes down through and into the wetlands here. This little trail turns into a swamp all but the three months of the summer. It's almost impossible to get through there without getting your feet muddy. So the idea is that there are some problems here that I don't know if planning has considered in the development of these facilities. That's a fairly tight residential configuration. We have over here, this little project, it has been a pain in the neck for everybody since it was installed, in that you have high density and black horse, and it's a public recreational area was designated as the ponds that are here, and the ponds are a public nuisance and a health, and a safety hazard. You've got steep banks down here that a dog in the residence over here in Lynbrook got into the pond, it was a little small yappy thing, but it was dearly loved by its owners, and it nearly drowned from hypothermia trying to get out of that pond. You've got a three-year-old kid just gonna drop in that thing. There's just been a history in this area of doing things kind of as if the world were ideal, and it isn't. And my concern is, over here on the White Rail Project, that has been, I think it's gonna be a good little project. You've got some single-family homes in there, not near entry level, it looks as if it's been properly planned and looked for, the engineering looks as if it's, you know, suitable. Of course, you've got a lot of fill in there too, it looks as if the footings go down to original grade, so, say there's been some thought put into it, but this is a headache, and I don't see this being, the way it's configured, as being anything more than a group of people with a, if you've put a motel vacancy sign out here, it'd probably work better. So, I would recommend that there be some other way of attracting something in there than a tot lot that's here in this corner, I guess that's what that vacancy's for, but as I say, the engineering on it, the water problem, who gets the water, what are they gonna do with the water? You take that as development water?
When we get done here, I will have these guys address your questions.
Okay, so, I guess that, oh, I was, one time, 10 years, 15 years ago, looking at putting a rest home assisted living facility in here called, it ends at Maggie's Band. This was Maggie's Band from right there through right there, and I appreciate that they wanna keep a history here, but if you wanna But if you want to keep a history here, that, I don't think that that's a, it's a public domain name because it's a historical site. I'd like to see that street renamed Maggie's Band. You know, just to, just because it is a historical site and the old shack that used to be the, the watering hole is, will be finally pushed in, is falling in on three walls. Only has one wall and a roof. So anyway, that, those are my concerns.
Great. Appreciate that.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim. Anyone else would like to come up and address this?
I'm across the street from Jim. And I got the same concerns.
Okay.
Second. Come and talk.
Well, if it's the same, the ones, then we don't need to repeat it. Come on up.
So.
Need to state your name.
Paul Goodwin.
Okay.
Excuse me. So the where's this?
Just gotta push it hard. Here. Try that one. See if that works better.
I've been a builder, general contractor for close to twenty years now. And we understand that there's gonna be some grade issues. I don't think it's anywhere near twenty feet drop here, but as with building any structure and any kind of development here, we're gonna have to work with the existing grade. And in doing so, we're gonna work with the engineers to, to approve according to typical standard engineering specifications to, to make sure that these structures are built in accordance with the, with the codes. As far as this water goes, again, that's something that has been taken into consideration during the purchase of the ground and, and through the, the consideration of the development and and how we're, you know, gonna proceed forward from day one. I mean, that's, that's something. The tot lot was said to be right here. It's not. The tot lot is right here. Which I think is pretty centralized. The inland overlay that has been talked about and the zoning change that has been suggested requires a minimum parking of, I believe, two-point-five, two-point-four spaces per unit. We have four-point-five spaces per unit in here. Two-car garages for each unit. As well at, so, and as well as fourteen there, 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 and there. Public or guest parking in there. We are gonna install a concrete fence through that board, that line. In accordance with the inland overlay requirements. Were there other questions that needed to be addressed? I couldn't remember.
Any geotech studies on it?
Uh, we, we don't have any geotech studies. Well, I'm not sure if those have been included at this point or not. I don't know. I, I don't know the answer to that question. We know, we, we know that that is something that's gonna have to be obtained before any kind of building permit will be issued.
Jim brought up the well, the free-flowing well there. Maybe that's a question for somebody else on staff, but capping that and using it as part of.
Yeah, the, the well would be capped. And there's, you know, proper procedures to do that. We'd hire a professional subcontractor to come in and take care of that.
Maybe this is a question for Chris too, but how, how much, how many more feet are we getting on the road here that is like Jim mentioned, that is a skinny, skinny road there?
Yeah, we, we are hooking into sewer right up here.
Okay.
So we're doing half of this road till this point. Because we've gotta run the sewer line there.
So you're improving this road up here?
Yes. All the way up. Half of it.
You're improving the road along your, so they are widening it.
Yeah, so for.
They're not widening the road. They're, they're, they are.
Yeah, it's not widening here.
They're adding utilities to them. And as the widening occurs.
Okay, but there's no.
I guess, I, I guess my point in bringing this section up is because right now, if you drive, if you drive down this road, it's a bunch of potholes and a mess. And our tearing up the road to
Get to repave it.
Do the utilities, we have to repave it, which will be an improvement. Maybe not by the technical definition of the word improvement, but it will certainly be an improvement for what it is. From this point to this point, it will be a widened section. You can see that line drawn in there. With sidewalk and.
Will it be taken up by, will you allow cars to park on here?
No.
So no parking on the road? To take up the space that you.
No, and we, we've got, as part of the plan, I don't know if it's in the.
Yeah, I saw the land, the trees.
We've got the landscaping plan with trees and along there and in the back here as well. According to the inland overlay requirements.
All right. Great. Thank you. Anyone else would like to come up and talk? Pardon? I'll give you a minute. Since you got some neat-looking suspenders, I'll let you have that. Yeah, there you go.
I did a project with a general contractor. I was the project superintendent over Warty on a three-hundred-unit Sterling Village project in Salt Lake Hundred and Six South. I don't know if you did, or the great buildings are on the east side of the Jordan River. And they're four stories tall, et cetera. They were built on fill material.
Well, don't look into it. Try that one. Yeah, yeah, don't look into it, please.
The the, the main reason I was a Warty superintendent on that project was that the buildings were built on fill material along the Jordan River that was a fine silt clay. And this is clay. And water running through, no septic systems, has I'm sure saturated that ground from what is going through here. We had to, the buildings were starting to split. That was on the fill. That wasn't. The fourth story had a three-inch crack in the top. And we had to jack those buildings back up again and repair them. So that is a problem. A major problem. And that needs to be addressed. And so that's, I don't want to have a, a thing in my backyard that is condemned, like that little piece of property over in Pearl that they cut the toe off of a landslide and it slumped again.
Sure. Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Gordon and second by Councilman Scobes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chris, would you like to come up and address some of these issues?
So I don't recall in the approval stage that there was a restriction on parking on this road. So if that is something you wanted, you would have to put it in the motion. Yeah, this was nothing more than a normal local commercial road. So I don't know that it's needed, but if that is something that's important, then, then it would have to be added to the motion or, or a resolution later. If we found it was a, a problem later, then you could make that restriction later. So however you'd like to proceed with that. Going on with, first of all, the water that comes out of a flowing well here. That is already claimed water. It's part of the New Northeast Bench irrigation district. That water belongs to that. It can't be claimed. And, and however it ends up up here, it's measured and, or, or will be measured. They don't have the best measuring devices, but eventually there will be better measuring devices and, and the, that company has claimed all that water.
So I guess capped, could they do a change order somewhere else and that water?
So, so if, if it was capped, that water would just surface somewhere else and still end up up there. So likely, the best way to handle it might to be introducing to a storm drain system that drains out into this ditch and, and can claim it. Or cap it. It depends on what their geotech report requires. They, they have to have a geotech report before their plats approved. So and, and that will be for the whole site, not just for the building permit. So.
So the geotech will take care of the, the issue that we were talking about?
So the geotech will, first of all, it will measure the depth of the water in a spring month, of the groundwater. And, and the finished floor of the bottom floor of each dwelling. So if it's, if it has a basement, the finished floor of the basement would have to be three feet higher than the groundwater in the spring. So that is how that is taken care of. As far as the foundations and structurally how those have to be supported. We don't have any geotechnical engineers on staff. We require them to obtain a geotechnical report which addresses how the roads will be built, how the foundations will be constructed and, and, and the water issues. We then take that report and we give it to our geotechnical engineer who we have on retainer to, to review those reports. And, and, and he comes back and says, they need to do this, this, and this in their, in their report and, and protects the city and, and the residents who eventually move in here from.
Was that issue addressed at DRC and planning and zoning?
So, so that is, is actually followed during the review process. We don't re, uh, we don't review geotechnical reports at DRC or, or in Planning Commission. Those reports are, are submitted, reviewed, approved, and then we follow those reports when we approve the, the building permits and the construction plans for, for the plat. So the fact that they are required i- is just a matter of, of how we, we go through the process. But we don't review the actual geotechnical reports. So usually they're about that thick. Yeah. So.
Before it's all built, it has, they have to submit all those?
Yeah, at the plat stage, plat approval stage. Did I answer all of the questions?
Right. They had a question about that, or maybe it's made that that trench that's four feet deep was on the side of the road.
Over here?
Going to be filled in. You're gonna have increased traffic. I assume that, that, that black line that comes on to eleven hundred east there, that's a, an ingress, egress for the property.
So you're talking.
Up there.
Talking about this one?
Yeah, so.
Keep going north. Yeah, yeah, that, right there. Right there's a, a road right below that. Is that a road?
So you're talking about this?
That's right there.
Yeah, so that's a road. If you look right here, this is the future curb and gutter. So the road will be about twice as wide as it is now. We currently do not require a developer to fully improve both sides of the road. So.
Thinking about a four-foot-deep trench that somebody's gonna walk along, drive along. I don't, I know some developers, but we also have steep banks over on the pond south of that that is a public nuisance, a public hazard. Something, something to be addressed at that time.
Yeah, you, you are right. This is an existing hazard.
Is that a drainage ditch or what is it?
Yeah, it's a, it's a drainage ditch. Historically, it's, it's an irrigation company ditch as well. It's, it's how New Northeast Bench has delivered some of their water. It, it is an existing hazard. We have many hazards that we typically inherit when prop, uh, land annexes. We have old county roads with, with deep ditches like this that aren't ideal. This makes it safer and improves the situation by doubling the width of the road. We don't have ordinances in place that require both sides to be developed and all hazards off project to be mitigated. It likely would be viewed as, as some sort of a hardship if we required it, I, I believe.
Okay.
The game's just started. Just getting ready to start.
Thank you.
So we've switched the video feed to the internet feed to your off-internet.
Hey, who gave you that power?
Have that power. You can take it away.
All right. Okay, so you get there. All right. Any other discussions, comments?
I, I guess I don't know, I don't necessarily want to hold the developer back from the development for that parking reason here, but this has been, I can tell you now, I frequent this road quite a bit because it's my, it's my Walmart access, Mayor. I, I come from the east side and I hit Fourth North and then I turn right and then instead of turning it to the left, it's on expressway land, I turn there and go back and forth. And this intersection now, I'm surprised when I come to this intersection, either to or from, this is a good access for me to get to the freeway too, if I go over to morning meetings. Because it now gets into the freeway there and I miss all this. So I'm surprised sometimes at this intersection here of how busy it is. And obviously adding this, many more single-family residences on this road to and from Walmart and our, our whole area over here is going to increase in traffic. I guess what I'm getting at is I, I wouldn't necessarily hold the developer back because of that. But I, I would want to watch it and I guess revisit the parking issue on that road. That if we double the width of the road and then just take that up with cars parked there. This is, you know, I've been on this road a couple of times now where I have a, a vehicle coming the other way and you just about can't make it. I mean, it's, it's that tight. And you definitely don't want to be going off the west side of it. I'd pick the east side before that big drainage ditch. So I don't know if it's recommending to your, you know, to your residents there, your buyers there, to not park on the road or something. I don't think I want to burden our police department very much of, you know, park, not parking on that street when we park on other city streets. But for the time being, until that gets developed and the other side of this road gets improved, you're gonna have some traffic on there that you've never had before. So maybe just a.
Well, and I, I think what we can do is if we see that becomes a problem, you know, we can
Change it then.
Change that, put a sign up there, tell them no parking on the street and just, you know, instead of making a whole big change of ordinance, we can just put some signs up there and have Officer Adams up there, you know.
I mean, I bet the developer would want to encourage his people that, that you have guest parking inside the development. Use the guest parking. Don't park on the road. Sure.
During the DRC process, this, this was very much addressed, not necessarily directly with the parking on that street, but just the parking in general. And we took it from two and a half stalls per unit. We dropped two units. We had thirty. And we brought that up to four and a half stalls per unit. And I think a part, I think a large part of it does address that because the guest stalls, it's certainly gonna be a whole lot more convenient to park for any guests inside that development where we provide a parking. I mean, I think the residents are, first off, gonna park in that garage or driveway. And, and guests will fill up whatever other parts there are in the driveway and then in the guest stalls first.
Here, we count garages as parking spaces? Two parking spaces for the two-car garage? Yeah, I, I just want, again, I don't think it's enough to hold up development floor and changing ordinance like the mayor said. I don't want to do that. I, I just think it's something that that road, road's starting to be traveled heavier now that if, a strong encouragement to the homeowners there.
That road you're talking about would be the back, behind the fence of, of those units along that road.
So you're putting up a fence on that, on this side too, except for the entry into your, so, into your development? Vinyl fence here and concrete fence here?
Yeah, that'd be a long way for him to walk over to visit somebody.
Yeah.
So that, that'd probably help it.
I don't think the travel's not any different than your Legacy Farms or Twenty-five Fifty East or any of the other things that you've got going on up the east bench. The only thing I'm a little concerned about, and it will be addressed by.
The only thing I'm a little concerned about, and it will be addressed by your geotech study, is your buildings and that because that ground down on that bottom section is saturated with water all the time. We know that, we played there, we used to hunt ducks there, we used to do all sorts of things there. And, uh, so we know how that spring works and everything else. So capping the well and probably doing change orders and things like that onto it, but it's going to come out somewhere when you cap it, like Chris said, and, and, uh, so that is a, that is an issue. So, but as far as the travel on that road, I, eventually that will be solved when other developments come in, but, and that ditch, that irrigation ditch will be solved as, as other developers take on that responsibility. But as long as there's geotech studies involved in that ground and, and things-
Email me the geotech study, um, if you have any specific questions, but it has, a thorough one has been done.
Okay. Well, that's, that's all that we care about is make sure that we don't have any problems with the building and that should be solved by the contractor.
Well, I'm certainly concerned about it as well, you know. It's, it's, it's a lot of work than anybody else wants.
Well, sure. Yeah, you don't want any nightmares. Jim's done a lot of building in his life and I know he doesn't want any nightmares and-
Where the hair came from?
That's right.
Amen.
And you, and you, and you want a good clean, you know, development anyway that, that, that's, that helps your neighbors too, you know, and anyway, it's, it's a, it's a start somewhere if a new development's going to happen and, and you're going to have developments again on that west side too with that irrigation system one day and that will get solved too as, as things go on. So it's a start.
Any, uh, other? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the zone change for the townhomes at Maggie's Bend, R3 with the infill overlay.
Got a motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scob, second by Councilman Dart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
We also need to act on the preliminary plat and support visiting and control.
You what?
We also need to act on the preliminary plat and be able to hold it up.
So you need a motion on that too?
Just add on to preliminary plat.
Okay.
Motion to approve the preliminary plat for townhomes at Maggie's Bend located approximately eleven hundred west, eight hundred north with the infill overlay.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Davis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Did we get it?
Got it.
I like that. Proposed preliminary plat for Meadow Creek Ridge.
This, this is a project along Highway fifty-one. You can see it outlined there on the screen. It's been approved once before. Uh, they are seeking an extension of their approval. They have made, uh, two changes according to Dave's staff notes. First is he's identified parcel C, which I believe is this piece over to the west end. He says they've pulled it out for now because they have some wetlands issues and they're working with the Corps of Engineers to resolve those, but until they're resolved, uh, they can't do anything there. The second thing is initially the major power line that came through there for Rocky Mountain Power, which is this corridor right about here. Uh, they were proposing, they dedicate that to the city and we're going to use it for trailer park space and parks in our recreation department. I thought there were better uses for that. Uh, I don't know what discussion they've had with the developer, but that's been pulled out as well, so that won't become our responsibility. Other than that, it's the same as has been approved before and we do recommend that we just grant a hundred and eighty day extension on this preliminary plat.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the preliminary plat for Meadow Creek Ridge located approximately fifteen hundred north State Road fifty-one. The extension of that or the, or the preliminary plat of it?
Hundred and eighty days.
Extend the preliminary plat, it's ready to expire.
Okay, so extend the preliminary plat.
Do you need to state how?
Hundred and eighty days.
Oh, extend it one hundred and eighty days.
Second.
Okay, got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Resolution fifteen dash oh seven authorizing the city manager or designee to execute cemetery plot purchase agreements for employees.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is a, a simple benefit that we thought we could offer to the employees without actually really applying or, or giving them, uh, anything that, that costs money. So we propose that, uh, we, we make it available to the employees to purchase cemetery plots through payroll deduction, but, uh, really it's just a function of them putting money into a, the account, if you will, and, and when the, the plot is purchased, they, they would, would receive title to it. So the resolution and the contract are, are a simple contract between the city and the employee that they can pay for this over, over time, uh, if you will, a layaway program to purchase cemetery plot.
Oh. Shit. Oh, there you go. You've been thinking about that all day, haven't you?
No. Um, and, uh, the contract then is, is simply to let the employee do that and, and we'll take it out over a twelve month period, twenty-four pay periods, uh, pretty straightforward. I think right now, since the mayor signs all of the cemetery deeds, the proposal is to have the mayor sign these as well, uh, at some future date if we change that and, uh, the mayor doesn't want to sign those anymore, we probably move this with wherever that went as well. But right now, we'll, I think we'll keep the cemetery things together.
Okay.
So that's our proposal.
Now, one question I got here on our handout, it has fifteen dash oh seven, on our computer printout has fifteen dash oh eight.
Yeah, fifteen dash oh seven.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm one ahead.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, my bad.
There you go.
I'm moving ahead, I was trying to get done here.
Stay with us.
All right.
I take that by.
This is available to all employees that have a current paycheck with the city. Uh, council members would be included in that. If then, if the individual's relationship with the city through payroll goes away, they get terminated, uh, they leave for whatever reason, then they would have to pay that in full. And we've got a couple of, of policies in place that would, we would follow to make sure that either payment was completed or, uh, the contract was terminated and, and money's reimbursed and, and the transaction wouldn't be fully effective.
Can these be used for Christmas presents?
Hey, don't knock it, I, I got one from Christmas years ago. And I asked her if they wanted, didn't want me to use it, but-
Your, your mother-
My mom gave it to me, yeah.
Your mother never gave you another Christmas present because you didn't use the one she gave you.
No, that's it. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve resolution number fifteen dash oh seven, a resolution authorizing the city manager or designee to execute cemetery plot purchase agreement by employees.
Okay.
Second.
We got a, since, so we got a motion by Councilman Dart and a second by Councilman Scob. Since this is a resolution, we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Councilman Dart.
Aye.
Councilman Davis.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scob.
Aye.
Okay, that passed. All right, uh, two thousand fourteen annual drinking water quality report.
Okay, this is a report that we're required to give to all the residents every year in their utility bills. It basically states, uh, the quality tests, the results of the quality tests that we do on our water system every year. Uh, gratefully, all of them have passed. Uh, if you look in that table, there's a little, uh, violated or not violated and it's all not violated. There's an N in that whole column, so that's what you should look for there. Talks a little bit about the sources of our water. We, uh, the large part of our drinking water is springs, uh, which is, is a very good tasting water, very, uh, good quality water, uh, that we provide for drinking. A lot of our pressurized irrigation water comes from the river and then we supplement out of wells for, for both when needed. Uh, since the opening of Cold Springs, we haven't had to supplement out of wells very, very much, perhaps a few times during the peak summer months, which is actually healthy for your wells. Uh, you want to exercise them and keep them operating, uh, regularly each year. Uh, I just want to say a couple of things to what the mayor said about not having to have restrictions. That's absolutely, uh, right. It shows, uh, really the forward thinking of, of my predecessor and requiring water. And one of the things that I think is really good is when we require water for a development like, like this, we make them give us enough water to supply that development in a drought year. So we, we don't say, well, when, when there's plenty of water to go around, give us enough water. We say, okay, when we have a drought year like two thousand fifteen, we need to have enough water to supply your neighborhood and that's what we require and, 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 and that works really well so that we're not in dire situations when drought years come up. And then as far as conservation goes, I, Spanish Fork City, uh, always has done the best conservation, uh, practices there is, and that is we meter the pressurized irrigation water. Uh, it, when, when you don't meter water, it will, it will be overused. And, and so just the fact that we meter it and, and have always encouraged conservation, I believe is why we're in the situation we are now that, that we don't have to put on restrictions and, uh, and, and, and honestly, restrictions often work against you. Uh, I've read quite a few studies and, and, and results of restrictions where someone says, well, you can only water month on, on even days. Well, guess what? Those residents, they remember to water every even day, whereas if you say, you know, water as you need to, but we're going to charge you for it, then they think twice. And then you also, if you just encourage, uh, conservation on a more environmental level and, and because it's the right thing to do, then people listen to that and they respond well to that. And so that's really been Spanish Fork's practice.
Great.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve resolution number fifteen dash zero eight, a resolution approving the annual drinking water quality report for two thousand fourteen.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. This is a roll call vote. Uh, Councilman Scob.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Davis.
Aye.
Councilman Dart.
Aye.
That is-
Motion to go into RDA.
Second.
Got a motion by, to go into RDA by Councilman Davis, a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are now in RDA.
Motion to approve consent items.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Davis, a second by Councilman Gordon to approve the consent items. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Take it away, Kent. You got it. Can't blink.
Okay, you're now in your RDA hat and that, we are presenting to you the tentative budget for the RDA and it'll be able to be amended or adjusted or whatever up until you approve it next month. And so just like last week, um, they presented the city's budget for two thousand sixteen. This is the RDA's budget for next year. You can see on it, it looks, it's identical to last year's because we're still in the middle of figuring out which projects are going to get done for this year and which ones are going to be next year. So, uh, those numbers may be refined before it gets finally finished, uh, in approval part, but the, it's identical to last year's and there's some big projects that are out there in the, uh, industrial, commercial area with the Canyon Creek as far as, say, uh, power lines and, uh, roads and, and different things that are in the, the north industrial column. If you look at the, uh, actually the Kirby Lane one is the one that's out there. The north industrial one is down there, um, by, uh, Smith Auto in that area down, uh, first east, second east, which is a, runs down by-
School check your work for him.
Second east, second east, that's what it is. Um, so anyway, that's the budget being presented to you and to the public and they have a month to look at it, to review it, and it'll be adopted, uh, the second meeting in June.
Great. Okay, I would, uh, entertain a motion to adopt the RDA budget.
Tentative.
What?
Tentative budget.
Tentative, tentative budget.
Motion to approve fiscal year RDA tentative budget two thousand sixteen.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Davis, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Motion to go out of RDA.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Davis, a second by Councilman Gordon to go out of RDA. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
I move we go into closed session for imminent, reasonably imminent litigation and land transaction.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Dart, a second by Councilman Scob. Go into closed session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're done. Heard, move into closed session. Thank you for everyone that was here. Even you, Chris.
Hey, Chris.